...local community. From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Brett and Kim Gwin would like to say thank you for your business.
Northwest Alabama heating cooler, blowing away our competition.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. I'd like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council Meeting.
Hi, my name is Randy Whitehead, President and CEO of People's Trust Bank. I invite you to view the live streaming of Hamilton City Council meetings every first and third Monday at 6:00 PM.
Get in your perfect state at the Holiday Inn in Gwin off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
I'm Rick Chambliss with Marion County Funeral Home and Strye Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Dwayne Cochrane, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carrying certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes is guaranteed to be there.
Since 1987, Smith Furniture has been in business to serve the community with high-quality furniture at the best price. Some of our name brands are Homestretch, Ashley, Lazy Boy, Catnapper, Lane, Barbasset, GE, Frigidaire, Whirlpool, and Maytag. We offer finance in 12 months, same as cash. So stop by Fulton, Mississippi and see Jim, Shannon, and Joe at Smith's Furniture or call us at (662) 862-7412.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Gwin to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties, you don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Hey, did y'all keep me down? Fast.
So here's our department. It is my meeting. Now, media is here with us tonight. We're proud of them. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. The beauty of it, Lord, is so amazing. And we can see you all in today's beauty of the weather and all of these things around us. Thank you for your blessings. We ask you to be with us in this meeting tonight. Help us, Lord, as we go forward with projects and much work that we have to get done. Bless this community as we strive together. Christ on our praise. Amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May you succeed. Just a couple of things I want to mention, then we'll get right into the meeting. President's Day is the 20th. That's a holiday for the city. If your garbage pickup day is on Monday, the 20th, please put it out on the 21st, Tuesday the 21st, we'll pick it up for you as we do a double day that day. Get caught up. I'm going to mention briefly, we brought home two awards from the State Rodeo Association this weekend. Matt McCracken went down and picked them up. We had the best rodeo, first-year rodeo in the state, in the whole association, matter of fact, last year. Plus, we got the $1,500 bonus dollar award for achieving what we did with rodeo. We hope to host that again with some advertising talk coming out real soon on our rodeo. It's the County Stampede. It's not just the Hamilton rodeo. We named it the County Stampede. We plan for it to be an annual event. This will be our second one coming up, so look out for the news on that. There's going to be a nice article in the paper. I'm going to try to steal it. Lewis's Thunder, unless too much, so I'll hush about that. Why don't you read it in the paper? But I want to give a big shout-out to our fire department tonight. We had the emergency services drivers and owners in today to talk with me. I found out that we had a brush fire going a couple of weeks ago, and our first responders recognized the gentleman on the property was in the midst of having a heart attack. And they immediately began to work with him and, according to the ambulance folks, saved his life. And we were proud of those guys for such an effort, recognizing, being trained well enough to know what was going on and how to do, how to handle it at the scene. And they had great reviews, the ambulance folks, the fire department, and they put the fire out. So they achieved everything that went for it more. We're a little proud of them tonight. Just wanted to mention that. It's just, you never know when you'll be called on to do special duty, and our guys are well-prepared. But we've had a training session. This very room lasted all last week, and we've allowed our facility to be used, not only our conference room, but our actual meeting room here was full of trainees from all over the county. We had a tremendous school here taught last week, so we're proud of our ongoing training that we offer and it's just part of it. And I'm going to ask Scott Tyra to give us a little shout-out maybe tonight on some of our athletes around our community.
Well, our track and field team just finished up with the indoor at the Cross Plate in Birmingham. We had some to place, and just want to give a shout-out to them, these individuals, set some new PRs. And congratulations to Jake Webb, who finished second in the pole vault.
Wow.
Congratulations.
We lost some new poles for our track.
We did, so.
I hope he was.
They're already paying off.
Okay, good.
That's good. And also, our girls four-by-four hundred relay team of Meg Wiggington, Ann Wiggington, Kyrie, Casey, and Aubrey Solz, also they placed third. So our young athletes here in town have a good representation of Hamilton, Alabama. Proud of the young men. I think that's just some more exciting things to be coming with this track project that we're hopefully getting real close, we'll be ready to start breaking ground for tomorrow.
Yeah, I think I noticed our varsity athletes and basketball are about to start their playoffs. Is that correct?
The girls are, will be playing at 7:00, so if you don't have nothing else planned for the night, come on down to the new gym. That's 40 years old. We should have called it the new gym. It tears itself up a little bit. But come on down to the new gym tonight and watch them play Hayable. They win, they'll play in the championship game. Wednesday at 4:00. And then our boys go to Hayable tomorrow night, and they play at 5:30 against Cordova. I didn't think so. And if they win, they'll play, I think, Thursday in the championship game. So a lot of sporting events going on right now, and baseball, softball, getting ready to kick off, and golf, and Costco, the outdoor track will be getting going. So our agri athletes are busy right now.
And pickleball is coming to Hamilton. We're building some pickleball courts. I've noticed Okalaka has a big pickleball effort. They're saying that revenue is, that will glean in one year is about 1.25 million for Okalaka. That's a big sport right now, and you can, ages eight to 80 play pickleball. So when we get our two courts ready, we want to see some eight-to-80 kids out there playing and lots of them. But we'll move on into the regular meeting now, and our first matter of interest tonight is a public notice hearing. Public hearing is being held for the consideration to approve the transfer of alcohol license for three stores located within the city limits of Hamilton. These stores were owned by Moore's Sea Stores and have recently been sold. The purchaser making the request for the license transfer and the location of these stores are as follows. Sugar Ben, application WSB-USA Incorporated. The second one is the Superstore, applicant ASH USA Incorporated. And Moore's Junior, that's at 239 Military Street South. The other locations are 4677 Bexar Avenue East and 5476 Military Street South. These three stores have been sold, and they're asking to have the license transferred. All three stores are located, all three store locations are currently selling retail there and retail tableware, on all premises only. At this time, anyone present may speak either for or against this request to transfer the current alcohol license for these store locations. Is anyone who wishes to speak for these matters? Okay, we'll close the public hearing then, and at the proper time, we'll vote for that request. It's later in this agenda. A regular meeting will now begin, and we need a recommendation to approve the minutes of the January 17, 2023 city council meeting. We have a motion.
Just close the public hearing. Don't we need to make a motion to close the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, I didn't close that properly. I'm sorry. I used to have these. I got a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor? Thank you. Now, we'll move to the first item, and that's a recommendation to approve the minutes of our previous January meeting.
Make a motion.
Okay, then we need a second. I have a second for that. All of us in favor of approving our minutes? Thank you. Item two is a recommendation to approve paying the accounts payable bills for January 2023. We need a motion also. Scott Robinson made the motion, need a second. Matt made the second. All in favor of paying our current bills? Thank you. Item three is the announcement of hiring Daniel Peoples, a new hire for the Hamilton Sanitation Department. And Daniel will be joining us almost immediately, I guess. Is he about ready to come to work?
A week, about a week.
About a week? Okay. Daniel will be joining us then about a week. And a recommendation to pay Daniel Peoples would be a rate of $16.89 per hour for this position. We need to make a motion, a second, and vote on that matter.
Make a motion.
Ross made our motion. We need a second.
I'll second.
Scott Tyra, second. All in favor of that? Ace, give it to Daniel. Thank you. Appreciate that. Now, we need a recommend, I'm going to make a recommendation. We hope to change our scheduled meeting for February 21st to Tuesday, the 20th, to Tuesday, February 21st, due to the city being closed on Monday in observance of the President's Day holiday. And to change that.
I'll make that motion.
Scott Tyra made the motion. We'll need a second to vote.
I'll second.
Scott Robinson made the second. Those in favor of changing our meeting date? Thank you. That will be on the 21st. Recommendation to approve the renewal of our social media development and maintenance contract with Gary Wayne Mays for an annual amount of $3,000. That comes as a recommendation. Before we vote, we need a motion, a second.
I just want to say, I appreciate Wayne, because I mean, anytime he needs something put on there, and I think from the departments too, he gets it up there pretty quick and helps us get some word out on the different emergencies or just things that are going on in town. I appreciate Wayne. I think it's well worth it. I'll make the motion to go ahead.
We got a motion, but we'll need a second.
I'll forward that.
Yeah, we need a second. All of us in favor of accepting this as a one-year contract? Thank you. You know, Wayne does a fine job. He's ready to the moment's notice that we want something posted. He puts it up there and takes it very seriously and considers what he's putting up, and if it's, he knows enough rules to, he doesn't put anything up that gets us in trouble. And that's what we want too. I appreciate him for that. Item seven is a recommendation to approve Cunningham lawn and tree service to complete the topping of the trees located around the Hamilton Sons house. And the trees consist of six trees that are badly new topping, and he's agreed to do all this work for $36.50. Our job, as was last time, is to haul those limbs. He'll put them in piles where it can be picked up with a grapple. Don't we have that too?
Yes, we do.
Okay. We need a motion for that matter too.
I'll make that.
A motion from Scott Robinson. We need a second. Matt, second. All of us in favor of getting this worked out? Thank you. And you want the city to have it notified, there's someone, you've got his phone number, you want to give him a go? Okay. You got to bring those folks to her.
We're cutting trees in seven and eight. We're recommending to plant more trees. We're trying to make the trees.
Three. Okay, let's get back. Straight faces here. Also, we recommendation, I make a recommendation to pass a proclamation declaring the week of February 19 through February 25th as Arbor Day for the city of Hamilton. Maybe Arbor Week. New trees will be given away on the February 23rd date from 9 to 11 here at City Hall. Do we have a motion to declare these dates as Arbor Days for Hamilton?
I'll make that motion.
A motion from Scott, and a second from Ross. All in favor of that recommendation? Thank you. We'll make the prior motion and declare it. And we believe our trees that we planted out here by the monuments may be through the summer. This is, this is very good. We believe it'll put out in spring, still be alive. Now, item nine is a recommendation to approve the transfer of the alcohol license as requested and presented in the public hearing notice. And that has to do with the former Moore's Sea Stores, and this will be for WSB USA, ASH USA, and ARH USA Incorporated. Do we have a motion to transfer those alcohol licenses?
I'll make it.
Got it from Wayne. We need a second. Second, Matt. All of us in favor of that transfer? Thank you. None opposed. Okay, item 10 is a recommendation to renew the AirMed Care Network Municipal Site Leadership for the city of Hamilton for the annual amount of $24,041. And this has been a good thing for us in the past. We want to continue this contract with these folks, I think. Is there any discussion before we ask for a motion? Very beneficial.
It's a good thing for us to.
Started there, Wayne's administration, some years ago.
You could get out of it, probably be a lot harder. You may not be able to get back.
Can't get the contract anymore. We let it go, it's gone proven. Those in favor, will you need a motion, a second? Got a motion from Scott Tyra.
Second.
Second from Ross. Those in favor of renewing that contract? It's such a yearly contract, one year at a time, so we hope they're still offering it next year. We want to keep it. Item 11 is a recommendation to enter into a lease with Jan Nichols for the property off of County Road 35 in Georgia Circle to be used as a retrieval point for the canoe lodge. The lease will be for $2,000 per year, and this is a one-year, year-to-year contract.
I'll make a motion.
And a motion.
I'll second.
Got a second from Scott. Those in favor of that lease? Think it's going to work well for us. We, I had some scouts looking for an Eagle project, and I might suggest that they look at doing some picnic tables and things down there, a good cleanup, and maybe a project down there to help them finish up on some Eagle Scout matters. So glad we did this. I'm going to suggest that'd be one of their projects. Then we'll also look at it and see what we need to do. I'll get Mr. Walker to go down there with his foreman, and they'll see what they think about our parking lot and get some stone on it.
I'm really excited, Max. I feel like that's something we haven't been able to offer here in Hamilton. We've got a good place to move in, but we haven't had a place for people to get out that seems problematic. But I will be able to advertise that we've got a canoe kayak launch and a place to get out. So I'm excited about it. Hopefully it'll help bring some more folks.
It's going to be much more popular, I think, than it's sort of been now that we have a retrieval point. We'll get to work on getting that ready for some of the spring riders. They'll be out pretty soon if it stays warm as it was today. I want Scott to talk to us just a little bit about the raised grant proposal and kind of give us a clue as to what we'd be looking at if we put it on the next agenda for a vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Farmer, the engineer, the city previously engaged to look at this project, the County Road 35, gave us the proposal. And this grant changes due to each presidential administration, so there's certain requirements that we got to have under the President Biden's administration as far as public transportation options or alternative transportation options. But the corridor is, he has presented now sports two tight blocks, six foot each on the other side, two bike lanes of four foot each. We did the four vehicle travel lanes, the four eleven-foot each. So we've got the, basically the four-lane highway with the bike lanes added on there as well. The cost has went up a couple of dollars, it looks like. The budget project now is $15 million, $15.4 million, with the 10% match from the city obviously being 1.5, with the $13.8 being what would be the grant lines that we would The positive would be getting $13.8 million for a $1.5 million investment, and to put a four-lane on County Road 35 with further enhanced economic capabilities of that corridor coming off exit 14, connecting with US Highway 43. But that'd be something we ought to consider. Maybe he's got a, all these residential here, so we'll force to look at it about, maybe the next meeting or the meeting after that to look into.
What's the timeline, Scott? Next year? Or if we vote to approve it, is it like a year-long project or a two-year project?
Yeah, a year. I don't spend any money until next 2024 on it. It would get awarded later this year, but it wouldn't be even on it until 2024. He mentioned here that the expenditures would be over three to five-year period. There'd be the upfront engineering costs, but the project management and the project, that's only a mile stretch of highway, but still, that's a two-minute mile worth. So I believe that'd take a couple of years to get an exact one.
If you all would permit, we'll, we'll vote on it on the next agenda. If you'll let me put that on there for our consideration. Thank you. Any other thing you need to tell us tonight, Scott?
Yes, sir.
Ashly, if you've got anything you want to break forward tonight? Any other business?
Just need to remind our supervisors to please watch our open times. We've had our work set another day in our budget. If we continue like it is, we'll be open budget, especially in labor and company performance. That's one thing I know. Sometimes you can't help it, you've got extra things going on, but if we watch it now, it will be a problem. And come October, this will be just a few months for our ready for it once in this year or so. We've got to be real watching our budgets, especially in our labor staff. Everything else, especially revenue still on that. We don't want to be over or something.
We're going to have a department head meeting this week, and we're going to address matters like that, and we're going to ask Ashly to bring the same notes that she shared with y'all to that meeting, and show everybody how it affects our budget. So we'll be, we'll be on that this week. As though of the business tonight, we'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Wait, no.
I'll second.
And we got Scott. Scott made the motion. All in favor? Appreciate everybody coming tonight, especially all the folks. Thank you.
...local community. From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Brett and Kim Gwin would like to say thank you for your business.
Northwest Alabama heating cooler, blowing away our competition.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. I'd like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council Meeting.
Hi, my name is Randy Whitehead, President and CEO of People's Trust Bank. I invite you to view the live streaming of Hamilton City Council meetings every first and third Monday at 6:00 PM.
Get in your perfect state at the Holiday Inn in Gwin off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
I'm Rick Chambliss with Marion County Funeral Home and Strye Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Dwayne Cochrane, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carrying certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes is guaranteed to be there.
Since 1987, Smith Furniture has been in business to serve the community with high-quality furniture at the best price. Some of our name brands are Homestretch, Ashley, Lazy Boy, Catnapper, Lane, Barbasset, GE, Frigidaire, Whirlpool. GE, Frigidaire, Whirlpool, and Maytag. We offer finance in 12 months, same as cash. So stop by Fulton, Mississippi and see Jim, Shannon, and Joe at Smith's Furniture or call us at (662) 862-7412.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Gwin to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Your story starts at Beville State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Beville State has an opportunity that is right for you with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.